To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis, your doctor, Messer, please.
I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums which should be seen today. A motion in a second. There will be discussion or comments on that motion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, I'm.
Mrs. Watfield.
I'm.
Dr. Messer.
I'm.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi. Item five on the agenda is hearing of the public. We have a few people signed up to address this this evening. Keep in mind that we ask that you stand, state your name, address, and where you live, and you will have five minutes to address the board. If it's already been addressed, we do have the right to tell you that we can do it again. We will not make any comments or decisions on what you can discuss, but listen to what you say this evening. So the first person on here tonight would be Courtney. Courtney, could you please come forward? It's the end of the question. Could you state your name?
Courtney, 989 West Martin Avenue, Amherst, Ohio, 44301. Good evening. As you can see, the Amherst Teachers Association is presenting canned votes today, which will ultimately be voted in the seventh place. Let me take a few minutes to explain what the canned vote represents. Best educators are worth knocking it over to the test each day. Nor does it end in meetings. In fact, ordered a best of our students from the community, we're starting to form a plan of friends during the summer. On the weekends, during our home kick on dudes, in the evenings, while the pandemic is in our students to ensure the best educational outcomes for the distance to the community. This is not only the credit spend, long-term. The time we spend volunteering, working on boards, and working with students towards you. The extra time we spend on travel or to national contact hours is necessary to not do it. Where are our students? And now at educators. The additional time we spend helping each and every one of our students to grow and succeed. Thank you so much. Each and every student represents 10 hours of personal time devoted to being the best educators for our students and our community. In fact, some of our educators have wrapped canned votes in the past with others. They didn't be here tonight because they are working their second job, volunteering elsewhere for summer extracurricular students that can't finish. Let me take a few minutes to provide just a few examples of how this time is spent and why this time is wasted. During a normal school day, we receive a certain amount of planning time each day. Very often, this time is spent in meetings, making phone calls to parents, writing notes home to families, and managing other unexpected tasks that may have arisen by deathbed leaving. Our priority is to place maximum care needs throughout the school and workday. That said, much of the planning and preparation is shifted to the faculty or the colleges. The extra work we do, which is in one of many ways Amherst educators, have been excellent stewards in helping the community. Work projects here is a snapshot, but in no way is all intensive risks of some of the necessary duties that is on the map. Classroom and bulletin board preparation, writing lesson plans, counselors working on scheduling, preparing materials and resources for lessons, grading papers and providing feedback. Assets in particular take between five and 20 minutes to read thoroughly and provide adequate feedback to our 120 to 150 students. Entering grades. CCP teachers entering grades on campus, power school, and my campus. Creating therapy plans, preparing for labs, shopping for lab materials, lab setup and tear down, providing feedback on lab reports, collecting high-quality student data for own test evaluations. Laminating, developing modified assessments or assignments and tests, including creating recordings of tests and essays. Creating weekly newsletters, restocking classroom supplies, analyzing data to ensure lessons are meeting the needs of every student, setting up student accounts for a variety of technology platforms, setting up and updating Google Classroom, writing letters of recommendation, open houses, checking out resources from various libraries, researching for resources online, conducting candidate fitness assessments after school for students entering the military. CCP teachers, LCC evaluation. Writing grants, scoring and compiling data such as spelling inventories, letters phonics screeners to determine small groups, shopping for snacks and materials for sense reasons, communication with parents and families, music and band concerts throughout the year, including preparation, setup, and tear down. Rate and progress monitor student IEPs. Serve on building and district level committees that meet after-school hours, writing progress reports, crisis response and mandated reporting, before and after-school tutoring, preparing for and attending parent nights, writing copies, classroom detentions. Provide opportunities for students to develop leadership skills through clubs that meet after-school hours. Monitor emails in the email or in the evenings to provide instant feedback to students that have immediate questions on homework assignments. In order to maintain a standard of excellence for our students and our community, we know these additional hours are necessary, and we do them gladly because our commitment to our students and the Amherst community is unwavering. We love being educators and are fully committed to every student that we get the pleasure of serving. Thank you all for your time.
Kurt Walker, 470 Long Street, Amherst, Ohio. Good evening, President Engel, Superintendent Monar, and the rest of the members and staff of the board. My name is Reverend Kurt Walker. My wife, Reverend Jennifer Walker Noiz, and I have a son, Isaac, who is currently a freshman at Steel. I wish to briefly share my thoughts on contract negotiations between Amherst Teachers Association and the Amherst Exempted Village School District Board of Education. But before I do, I want to take this opportunity to extend my congratulations to the board, the staff, and the teachers of Amherst for the high ranking recently received from the Ohio School Report Cards, giving Amherst four and a half stars. Congratulations. Truly could not have been achieved without dedicated teamwork among all. I would urge that this model of highly collaborative effort be continued in reaching a quick and fair resolution of the current contractual discussions. Clearly, the teachers have put forth good faith efforts in continuing to provide quality classroom instruction to our children even though they have not had a contract since June of 2022. The board certainly feels the need to be good stewards of the funds generated from taxes that a majority of voters have supported and passed ballot initiatives and will hopefully support in the upcoming levy vote on November the 7th. As we know, this proposed levy is focused on providing financial resources to replace the aging transportation garage and fill outdoor, fix outdoor athletics facilities. But I believe it is just as vital to take care of the district's most valuable resources: its teachers. It's taken more than a year to come to a resolution. I know drawing parallels can be fraught with pitfalls, but as we see political gridlock at the state and federal level with an impending shutdown looming, I can't help but think and pray that we, the community of Amherst, are above this sort of gamesmanship. Gentlemen, folks, this is about our children, who I don't doubt for a nanosecond are the highest priority for all those involved in negotiations. I urge the board and the association to hold each other mutually accountable for the welfare of all the children of the district who are in their care and get a deal done. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you this evening and for all that all of you do.
Mr. McKeever, I believe you're next on the list.
Thank you. It's a lot of energy here. This is really cool. You have to cap everyone for coming out and advocating on it. For what you believe in. It's for the children. It's for the less fortunate. My daughter graduated, my youngest, in 2015 from Amherst. She's doing greater than I could have ever thought of. I can count 15 people here. I put her on the spot where she's just kicking buckets right now. Thank you. Thank you all for that. I also have to thank the administration. We had options when we moved here from Minnesota. The city, the school board, made it affordable. This is a very attractive place to land. And one of the biggest reasons, if not the biggest reason, is the school district here. So I wear many hats in the city. And I'd like to speak to you tonight as a person who's done a lot of volunteer work in this city, specifically for the schools. Last week, I was up at the junior high, and it was teacher appreciation night's event. The reason I was there, it was the 10th anniversary of putting lights on that junior high. That was a $400,000 project that we brought in for $200,000 because more people here I can count showed up, screwed light bulbs, tightened bolts, and made things happen up there. The total bill of the school district was right around $5,500. The rest was volunteer and donation. Only in Amherst, this is a pretty cool place to land. As a person who's done a lot of volunteer work, part of that included running two PI levies, two bond issues, and two general fund, general levies, excuse me. So bond issued, PI's, general fund. I chose to do that because it was important, and what it brought to Amherst was important. And I haven't asked for it yet, and I appreciate just your consideration. We have a levy coming up here, or a bond issue that I feel is very important. It brings good things to Amherst. Good things in Amherst brings good people. It's a very positive cycle. So if you could, I'd ask you to contemplate with all this energy here. Could you please consider adopting, taking under your wing? You have a large megaphone and speak on behalf of this upcoming levy. I feel it's very important. Rephrase that. I know it's very important. It's one of several things that we need to do locally to continue to make Amherst more attractive than Avon Lake, to make it more attractive than Avon. We can do it. But I'm asking for your help. And with that, thank you for consideration. Again, thank you, all the teachers, for what you did for my daughter.
Deanna?
Hello. My name is Deanna Miranda, 5601 South Nantucket Drive, Lorraine, Ohio, 44053. I see so many familiar faces in here because I have a 4th and 7th grader who hasn't been a room mom since my 7th grader was in kindergarten. My husband graduated from here, I graduated from Avon. It took us a total of four seconds to decide that we wanted to raise our kids in Amherst. I am in this school constantly, helping with whatever I can. These teachers that I see do not stop. I have teachers that are answering my emails at 10 o'clock at night because we're all busy. And that's the only time we can all do anything. I have seen these teachers go into their own pockets to make sure children have snacks for school. I've even tried to donate some of the stuff for these children that don't have it. These teachers work so hard, every single one. I have a 7th grader who is pre-teen, and we could just leave it there. She has never had an issue with any teacher here. Oh my gosh, I just can't stand this. And she actually still likes to go to school. And I know that that's hard for a lot of teenagers. We all talk about how, you know, we have all these awards and everything else that Amherst. I'm very proud to say I'm from Amherst. I think everybody in this room can honestly say that they're either working for Amherst or proud to be from Amherst. I know my kiddos are. With that being said, we have all these awards and everything else. And no disrespect to anybody else, but the only reason why we have these awards and the attendance records and everything is all the teachers that are here. Everything has gone up, and inflation has gone up. Inflation's gone up for everybody. And again, I do know personally that there are some teachers who can't be here today because of the second job. I'm on my way to going coach soccer for AYSA after this evening. Please, just as a parent who is so involved with the school system and with all these teachers, I mean, I helped to move into the new hours building with my own. Is if there is any wiggle room, you take it because each and every one of these teachers deserve it with everything that they have gone through and with how they went through COVID. And everybody is still striving at the same. So whatever you guys can do for these teachers, please do it. And any wiggle room, this definitely appreciated. Thank you very much.
I would like to say that everyone in this room is here because we know that Amherst is a great community and a great place to raise children and a great place to educate. And we certainly understand everything that has been happening in the last few weeks. And we take all of that into consideration. But we also must take into consideration that we only have X number of dollars that we can spend for general funding. And you may laugh, because that's absolutely true, because we have to house students, we have to be here to support. And as we look, as we get ready to proceed sometimes on some of these issues, we have to know when we're able and when it's time to go back to the voters. And if we go back to the voters, we're going back to the voters now because that levy is up for renewal, okay? And that's why we're going back to that, because we have postponed the bus garage for at least five years, okay? Everything that's happened in the building is because of that renewal that's happening to keep the facilities and get you new facilities that is important to this community. Just as every teacher is important to this community, we also have to take a look at what the average teacher salary is throughout the community, okay? And with pride, I can certainly say that Amherst teachers are, one, the second-best teachers in the entire county. There's only one other district that has teachers that are paying a little bit more. But you are at the top of the pay scale in Lorraine County. And. It has to be heard, yeah.
He's the Olympic record.
Of course. We will provide that source to you. We have that documented there. We will provide that source to you. Amy, could you please make sure that Mr. Monar gets that published tonight or tomorrow from that perspective, to show us the comparison of where you are in that perspective, okay? And we have to take into consideration the amount of dollars that are there for that. If we could give you everything that you want, we wouldn't hurt you. But we have to, we have to make sure that we're able to cover the expenses of everything in the district and still maintain everything that you must do. We hear you loud and clear. We've been at the table every time we asked to be at the table a couple of times when you've not been available to be at the table, okay? Or we asked to be next week, you were not available, okay? So I'm just saying, these are the things. The negotiating team has been there. They have had directions from the entire board the entire time. We have heard, we have listened, and we certainly know where it stands. And we're trying our best, but we have to give and we have to take on both sides. So your cooperation on that is just as important because every one of us knows that we serve. We volunteer, everyone around this board volunteers and does everything as well, just like all of you do, to make the Amherst school as great as it is. And I thank you. I thank each and every one of you for your dedication and your commitment. And we will continue to work and get this issue resolved. I thank you for coming. I thank you for supporting. You know, it sometimes saddens us as a board to think that the only time some of you show up is when there's something negative going on in this community. To a board meeting, you show up when something negative is going on. And it could be. You only come otherwise if it's invited you because you're showcasing your students, which we greatly appreciate, okay? We greatly appreciate that. But I can guarantee you that all five of us sitting around this table are dedicated to this district because we care. And when I read some of the comments, our absorbent salaries that we make, we make $125 at a board meeting. We're not volunteering. I'm not saying we're volunteering as a board member. I do not say we're volunteering as a board member. I said we volunteer just like you do at other things. And all I'm saying is we hear you loud and clear. We hear you loud and clear, and we appreciate all the efforts that you've done. And we will continue to strive to do our best to meet your demands in the best possible ways that we can. Thank you for being here again, and thank you for everything that we do.
Try harder.
At this time, we would move to item six on the agenda, which would be the treasurer's report.
I do have more recommendations for the board. There are actually board minutes from the August 14 regular board meeting. The financials for August, there's a cash reconciliation in finances by Condon Special House Center. And the forecast report for the Dow Fund and the emergency mothers subsidy fund, Fund 16. And finally, there is an account pay or check to one listing, Pay Mucka Pogger, all four of which typically see for part of the financials. Item C is school supply accounting systems, the N and N. The employer's net balance for last year for classifieds down. And then finally, we have two donations that we would like the board to complete as a tip.
Right. Everyone's had the opportunity to look at the financial statements. So I entertain a motion for treasurer's recommendations 7A through 7D. I have a motion in a second on the floor. There is ready discussion or comments on A, B, C, or D under the treasurer's recommendation. Anyone? Hearing none, please call the roll for approval.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis, I'm.
Dr. Messer.
I'm.
Mrs. Watfield. Mr. Engel.
Hi. Motion passes. This time, we would have superintendent's reports.
Yeah, real quick, I just want to, last Friday, I gave out a community update with all of the homecoming events that are coming up. So I just want to remind the board of some things that are happening this Friday. Of course, the Gathering of Success is happening at 10 o'clock in the main gym. So it's always a great time to have nine former Amherst alum who are recognizing in the Gathering of Success. It's always a wonderful event. Homecoming parade's at 5 o'clock, that's downtown as well. And then, of course, go over everyone who joins us for the game at 7 o'clock. Just home, says falls here at home for the football game. And then, one thing we did last year was we got a tent for a reunion, 1983, '84, I believe. And so that was a really fun thing. So we had the opportunity to do that again this year. And this year, we're bringing classes 2003, no, 2002, 3, and 4. So we're hosting another tent for alumni to come back for those years to then celebrate our reunion a little bit at the football game. So just want to plug that out there for future years. Anyone who wants to come back for a reunion, who wants to come back during homecoming, I'd be happy to, again, host another tent for anyone who wants to do that. It's really a wonderful, fun thing to be, I guess, on the track during the football game. And this time, I think we have some kids involved, so that's going to be fun as well. So I'm looking forward to doing that again and making that tradition that happens every year. And of course, homecoming dance is on Saturday at 7 o'clock in the main gym. And so our students should have a wonderful time homecoming on Saturday. Real quick, Reverend Walker mentioned a report card. Thank you, Reverend Walker. Appreciate that. We had a great report card and doing some great things. Again, everyone knows we have the best teachers out there, so we had a great report card. And so we're going to be giving an update to the board, or the board asks for an update next month. So we're going to dive deep into the report card, get the information, all the data out to all of you. And then, President Director McKenzie Hall will help come in and kind of deliver that information and share all the good news with the report card. So thank you, Reverend, for bringing that up, and we'll have a good presentation next month. I think that's all I have for my report. We'll talk about maybe some items when they come up in the agenda, but that's all I have for this time.
Is there any questions for Mr. Monar? My name is the reporter, so anything that you need to ask him about at this time. Hearing or receiving none, we would move to the Assistant Superintendent Ms. Walker's report.
Speaking of things that are happening this week, I just want to remind the board that we have our first strategic planning meeting. Amherst is going to be engaging with OS, the Ohio School Board Association, to go through the strategic planning process. We have the first of our four meetings on Wednesday, that will be here at 5:30. We have about 30 folks who are going to be on our core team. So I think there's going to be a lot of great discussion as we move forward in that process and create a freer plan for our district.
Any questions for Sarah?
JBS report, they met last week. They are reviewing their plan on facilities because, as you know, when COVID hit, their whole plan, what they were going to do because of the upgrading, the needs to be done at that facility had to become a whole. So now it has to go back out and get reevaluated. And that report was initially presented last Thursday evening and helped me delve into a little bit more to see exactly how that's going to be prioritized and what kind of funds will be needed to do that because the dollar amounts for that have certainly increased from what it was pre-COVID. So that is the focus that that board is working on right now. And also, just to let you all know, the homecoming, we're all the folks right around the corner and at the craft fair, which has not happened since COVID will be happening again in October. So those are things to put on your calendars for anyone who would be interested in doing some of those things. Is there any questions that anyone has or needs about the location of school and having that's a real part of it? Not? Okay. Is there any other committee reports this evening? Does any board have to have committee reports? Dr. Messer, any reports for us this evening?
The Fall Conference for the region is fall, is the fourth, maybe the seventh, eighth, correct? And that's being held in Washburn, Washburn. So if any of you would like to go, I suggest that you get that noted and find if she and I know that. We probably each got an email about that. I know that Amy had sent out another email reminding about that, so. I, I'm assuming that Dr. Messer will be there. So if anyone would like to go, let's just take it to, that we have some reviews. Is there any other updates or board reports that we need to come forward with this evening? The Foundation Net, no more presenting meetings and report about that at this point in time. They're just getting started through the year from that perspective, okay? With that, we would move into the personnel recommendation, item 10 on the agenda.
Yes, we have personnel recommendations here. Many of them are, we have every year, for some contract changes, new hires, some other changes. I just want to point out and thank for item I.
I just want to point out and thank for item I. We have, and of course, exam, U-CAM coming up again. So thank you to Renee Opal, Tivity Subs, for volunteering, working on that as well. And also, K, there is an approval for extra duty for a non-violent prison intervention training, CPI training we've done. Sarah, how many, how many people involved?
Oh, do I ask that question? Uh, we've had, we've had 25 so far. We have another 25 coming for tomorrow.
Okay. So about 50. So it's, I've heard it's just been phenomenal training for all the teachers and staff that went through it. So thank you for everyone who was volunteering to do that work. And that's also item K. So with that, I'd like to ask the board for approval for personnel recommendations, items A through S.
We have a motion in a second on the floor for personnel recommendations. Is there any discussion or comments on any of the items? Anyone have any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Mrs. Wackel?
Dr. Messer?
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to item 11, educational recommendations.
Yeah, a couple of educational recommendations. The first one is an item for policy. That forces resolution to kind of basically change. And you mentioned of the House of Education in policy to change it to the new, I guess, Department of Education workforce, which I know there, I think there is a possible court action pending on that. So we'll see how that moves forward, but this was recommended by Neil. And real quick, Dr. Messer and Mr. Zappa were part of our policy committee. We reviewed all policy recommendations from law change, et cetera, with Neil represented it really well. So we're going to have a lot of policy updates for the board in October as well. So with that, I'd like to recommend education items A through F for the board.
We have a motion in a second for educational recommendation. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 12 on the agenda this evening is business recommendations.
Yeah. And before we go on to that, real quick, just thank you for approving all of the educational items. Just want to say, I think Courtney mentioned a Kent Fitch trip which happened this week. So again, good luck to all the teachers and students. Wish them all well. Hope that everyone's safe, has a joyful time. So thank you very much for participating in Kent Fitch. And then for business recommendation items, A through E, just a couple here, a couple that have to do with, again, homecoming, DJ, musical for the spring production. And again, approval of our contract with the lyric parts recreation so that our hockey team can practice for their season. So with that, business recommendation items, A through E.
Motion, please, in a second. Motion in a second for business recommendations. Questions, comments, or discussion on any business recommendations before you this evening? I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Business recommendation, motion passes. This time, we'll take a motion to enter into executive session for preparing or conducting and reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. We have a motion in a second to make discussion or comment. There will be no actions to follow. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.